We beat you.
Okay, we're.
I'm pretty sure.
Uh, six o'clock, we'll uh call me to order for store businesses justified. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Um, review and approve a minute, so August seventeenth.
Call second.
Motion second, uh any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Oh, I want to stay. All right, uh member's report, uh sorry, you Charlotte.
Unless you want to hear what's been going on up at the housing, Ruthie don't have much.
Uh, no, I'm good.
It's been interesting.
Uh, and no, nothing for me, sir. I will turn it over to Richard for comment and his report.
Uh, had a meeting last week with the ATV program state of Maine and sports association to get an update on the rail trail development progress. Um, at this point, things are lagging, uh there are a few landowner concerns on the stretch between Norwood and Addison uh that are being worked through right now, uh so it doesn't look like this end of the trail is going to be ready for winter. Right now, on an aggressive uh timeline, it will be next summer. Uh, the other component with that is the trestle and the covered bridge versus um like the chain length, chain link uh style fence, uh and the state is pretty much moving ahead and and I've signaled my preliminary support for uh the chain link style. The idea behind the uh covered bridge poses its own set of issues that we're kind of aware of and just been resistant to largely uh because of what we wanted. Uh, one of them is vandalism, uh the other is time related. If we are going to move on a covered bridge, it has to be engineered at probably a year or two and get it out. If it all gets approved and funded and then it would have to be constructed and we would literally be looking at upwards of four years before we would see that trestle uh be able to be used for crossing. And so that probably more so of the vandalism aspect of things um is the reason why I think that the proposal for wide chain link crossing with lower sides and the whole suicide surround um is the appropriate solution for the town. Uh, it's not binding in any way, uh but I I did indicate to Brian, I thought that that was the most reasonable approach and that would be my recommendation if it ever came for us. Um, so we'll have more discussion about that, but I think the timing is a big piece and I think that we're anxious to get that open and to reroute without that piece is almost impossible, they're very difficult. So we'll continue to keep an eye on that, not the news I necessarily wanted to be sharing with you, but I think it's the most realistic approach to our problem right now.
Will we have any sort of input at all of the aesthetics of like what goes up there or no, is that?
Largely no. No, I can tell you the preliminary renders that I've seen uh mimic others that they have done. Um, and we've talked about slight modifications so that it was uh more aesthetically pleasing and they're all open to that. Uh, they're open to expanding the width, we've asked for things like that that aren't really the default um that they're willing to take care of for us.
I just think that that's definitely, I mean, when you look at all the pictures that we take of the town, it's looking at the bridge, a chain link fence is going to be kind of an eyesore on the other side of it. Like, I think that, I hope that we can do something that looks nicer than just.
From the photos that I've seen, uh and I don't have them in my deck tonight, the wood frame itself of the exterior of the bridge sort of shields masks the chain link appearance, so the chain link becomes much less prominent in its appearance. I think you've, have you seen the picture?
I I have, I have, I was trying, I was trying not to be that.
Okay, right, so it masks that a little bit, it's not like I've referred to the whole suicide fence that comes up and around.
I mean, it's like how low, I mean, I I, we can say like.
I'd have to pull the renders and I don't want to get off on a sidetrack tonight, but quick question.
Chain link is usually fairly easy up and down, is that something you could get going with chain link and swap at lay-in date four or five years down the road?
Possibly. Uh, right now, it's, I'm not considering that strictly because I would like to see the trail open.
Yeah.
So how do we do that and then can we fumigate after the fact to get it converted over once we get the width and the support?
Yeah.
I I'm a little concerned about not having higher sides too, to be honest with you, like if it's something that my horse can rear up and fall off, that makes me a little nervous.
I'm just providing you the update that I got from the state, we'll look the state back in on it. Um, and we can, I'm happy to share those plans, I have them in file uh from that meeting, so I can show them to you after the meeting or send them out to you electronically. Uh, efficiency main, they asked that we host a a press conference, a press release event for efficiency made in the governor's office, which we did at the fire station that was related in large part to the large amount of money that we've received that over the hour upgrade, the LED lighting in all of our buildings is several, um almost forty-five thousand dollars worth of incentives. And so where the lead town in terms of that program and they just released another round. So there was a nice press release, impressive, and it happened here. Um, and so that was all good visibility for us in the fire station, everything else. Uh, also good connection, Hannah Pinker from the governor's office uh was present, so it opened up a few other doors, pointed conversation. I'm going to just go into the governor's office, the future innovation policy, I think that it is, a lot of money floating around there and she oversees all of that, so um really good conversations and uh I will be circling back on that connection there for some of our other interests, I think it's going to be included in here between stem. The crack seal striking project at the airport is finally going to get off the ground, ideally September nineteenth, weather permitting. The planning board will be meeting tomorrow to review the feedback provided by the attorney on the proposed solar regulations as well as its integration into the existing cycle review ordinance. Uh, there's going to be some sticky points because some of the things that the attorney has advised were sticking points when we were drafting uh what they'd like for regulation, so that should be an interesting dialogue tomorrow. Uh, today we had the delay presentation before the grant committee handling the Good Shepherd Food Bank of Maine community driven strategies to end hunger grant, uh which is uh one of our attempts to seek funding support, uh not from a tax base, uh to support a food pantry. And I think there's a strong opportunity there, um and the decision on the grant was expected within two to three weeks. The grant request for a hundred thousand, uh it could be any from zero to a hundred or could be the full hundred. I don't know if it would be the full, because that's the full plot, but uh also related to that is I've had a meeting yesterday and then in discussion with Hannah Pinker with regards to other funding sources for the food pantry. So there's a community resilience grant that's administered through GOFIT, which is that future innovation policy uh at the governor's office. Uh, there's USDA opportunities and whatnot, so we're looking at that as additional funding sources to execute um a goal that we're looking at with the pantry. Also, uh those opportunities, they look at climate change and things like that, so solar panels on municipal buildings, the grants could be up to fifty thousand dollars for standalone grants that only affect power municipality. Um, and then we're eligible for grants every six months, so theoretically we could knock out the town office with one of these grants, six months later apply from fire station um and move that way if it was cost effective for us, so there are a lot of different steps and pieces to that, but uh I thought we'd be uh missing our mark if we weren't exploring that. It helps with our roof condition anyway, uh but then could offset our energy costs um here. So tax collection rate, we're about ten percent ahead of whether we're trending last year when we've collected well one-third of real estate taxes committed already. Sewer lanes will go on uh for unpaid twenty twenty-one usage July, August, September next week. Uh, that literally is choice wealth that once again when our investments uh is asked to be on your agenda for October nineteenth to discuss the current market, which isn't really favorable, but ours specifically best. On some cooler days, feedback overwhelmingly positive, not across the board. The airport was above and beyond its success primarily because of the weather. Um, there is a survey online, it's linked on the homepage under Lucidae's and then it's also on Facebook asking for people to provide their feedback so that we can integrate that into our close-up meeting. Uh, the major concern that we're hearing that cropped up on Facebook and is coming back through the survey is traffic control in the break. Uh, many schools have fought on that. Yes, probably the intersection should be shut down, but we had people that were stopped, the vehicles were stopped at the head of the intersection and none of the people were pulling help around and trying to bypass because they were too good to lay in line or whatnot. So that's just really frustrating because largely those people were using side streets to navigate around, which means they're familiar with our community, which means it's just largely inconsiderate. Uh, nonetheless, I'm working to coordinate traffic safety training for volunteers, so that if you want to have a parade in town, we're going to need volunteers to shut this down. Um, we've tried to work with fire departments in the region to support that versus certain reviews in the past with great success, they've been exhausted. Um, so we're really left with volunteers, so I've reached out to Safety Works, which is a division of the uh State Department of Labor to see if they're willing to coordinate that for us or offer two or three sessions that people could come in and get trained on traffic safety and then they could help us with for us best um to make sure that our intersections are covered off on uh when we want to have anything that requires a street closure such as a parade. So we'll see how that goes, unfortunately, if we aren't able to recruit volunteers, you're looking at the cost of decision details, which I don't think there's staff in available, forget about the funding uh to do that, and so then at that point, how would we need to smoke breaks? And that's the message that we're getting out of the feedback that we're receiving is that people don't want parades if we can't have traffic control. So our next parade is scheduled for the second Saturday in December. And if we're not able to recruit those volunteers to get trained and be committed to that, then there just won't be a parade. And that would be effective one for. Uh, ultimately, it boils down to negligence and it's been brought to our attention that there are concerns and if something does come and we're not addressing it, then uh that's unfortunate position. So hopefully, um we'll be able to recruit volunteers. Uh, I'm working on a volunteer tracker just to go through the folks that helped with the overall organization of Lucidae's and that number is is surprisingly low, I think we're at about sixteen that got us through getting off the ground through the entire organizational component of it, the airport and the park. So there were maybe six volunteers that did Monday, the parade in the park. Uh, and that's just not something that we can success on uh doing what we're doing with community events, so.
Are we not allowed to like put up, you know, like, you know, like the white sawhorses, like just close stuff off, like are we not allowed to put up like barriers like that on the road?
So we're able to do that, but you still have to have the person that goes in and puts it. And right, you have to put it into place at that time that we're going to launch it. So it just makes better sense that the person would be there to say, you know, I want to buy. And if people go buy a parked car, they're certainly going to go beyond the Jersey, uh a temporary area. And and that's that's largely what we saw. I walked that road, I don't know, five units back in the break and at every intersection, somebody was stopped. So it was people going around the vehicle, people got caught in the middle of it. They were all pulled over.
Yep.
There was not one that was moving that came past me. So it was people that got to that intersection and were too impatient and they went around. That's what caused the issues, unfortunately, and I'm not even sure the person is trained appropriately. So the blue lights will take care of all of that, but I think well, so we'll be pushing that out with a lot of support because a lot of economic development comes from things like parade.
Hopefully, all the people who are complaining about that on Facebook will be the ones that sign up to volunteer, so can still keep going on.
I think there's a lot of people that would be willing, especially if it's a free class and we feed them or something or, you know, just make it easy for them to do. Yeah, that's all. And the sheriff's department will help with that.
They, so they always help out to the extent that they can, but we're on a holiday. And he said, I'll give you whatever I can, it'll either be one, two, or three, I hope it was one.
Yeah.
And he was, he was at the lead and unfortunately, you know, not to get into it, but the candid conversation that we had when he said who's shutting down the side streets and we had to say we don't have anybody. He said, well, what are all the fire trucks doing at the back?
Yeah.
And he said, maybe we should radio back to.
Yeah.
And.
If they're parked going across and no one can get pat, they're not going to hit them, you know, just park them likewise. Yeah.
Next year.
Yep.
December.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So we'll see, we'll see. It's a better than a town truck, fire truck, bucket motor.
Yeah, well, that's what it takes so that, you know, it's not ruined for everybody, then, I mean, we do it. Because I don't want to see them go away because I think it's a huge value and it's great for everyone to get out and do that, like it would be a real bummer if we lost that because of that, like, I mean, you know.
But it takes a village.
Well, you know.
Not just to help raise the children or support the school.
That is, you know.
All of these and it's just so many people walking away from it.
Yeah.
And that's all I.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, special action on September seventh, general warrant number seventeen. Motion to approve.
General warrant number seventeen, the amount of eighty-five thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars thirty-four cents.
I will second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Nicholson, is that wrapping them up or is that something?
Large check for Nicholson, oh, that is the wrap-up plus their contract, so they are.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, Harrison.
Calcium.
Yeah, is that all we bought, is that just the latest?
No, that's just the latest.
Just the latest.
And who is superior construction services, what part of it was that?
That is the guardrail installation of.
Oh, okay.
Seeing none, all in favor? And that's everybody. Uh, public comment? Cool, I have that here tonight. All right, uh, special action on road name, Phyllis Drive.
This is one that came to action a few years ago, uh and there was a pending building for the parcel. This is really with the grand property coming up from Porto Street coming up in the back, there is a building permit and on the permit for uh the location of a mobile home. And that then does uh require new road name, road name requested um by the family is Phyllis Drive.
Well, I'm going to go with the services.
It's a service to the business.
That's it.
They're ruined. Why make a motion we named it Phyllis Drive?
Same, motion the second, uh any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, uh, discussion action on junkyard renewal application for five eighty-six.
This is L and L Properties LLC, some auto, auto salvage, this is the standard renewal. Uh, past practice indicates a way of public hearing and approve the permit uh by inspection code office, they are compliant.
There's been no complaints or violations or anything?
No.
And I move that we uh they approve their permit without uh public notice, what public uh hearing.
Set.
Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Uh, discussion action on.
This is uh an annual appointment last year, Jim held the seat, I believe. Uh, one has to be an elected official, one could be an appointed official, just merely it is me and then they select for as an alternate.
Maybe Jim kill it last year, you want to redo it?
I'm not, thank you.
Uh, anybody else interested in that? I don't want to see you at all on this.
Um, no, because it's a, is it an annual or is it, yeah, so I'm not going to be here, so I'll pass.
Okay. Anybody else looking to do that?
Oh.
Wasn't a very heavy lift, as I already called, so there's a motion, right?
Yes, I move, I'll do it.
There's a motion and a second, second, uh any further discussion on that? Uh, I can see, so we do primary?
Yeah. Yeah, it's only if Richard doesn't show that.
Right, or you've got nothing else to do more for lunch.
Gotcha.
See, okay.
Maybe we'll go to.
Discussion, all in favor? That's it. Uh, so business.
I have one other, uh, it's okay.
Yeah, no, please, whatever.
Uh, I had a late submission, there was a request to be on the agenda, I didn't have to take work in, uh but the request is from Ken Eliasen.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, who is looking to open six penny jog on Main Street, uh the request is for uh the on-premise license to serve. So if it is the Lord's pleasure, that would be to add consideration um of license consideration to the agenda, followed by considerations.
So moved.
Motion and a second, uh any further discussion?
Seeing none, just to get it on the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah.
Seeing none, all in favor? That's everybody.
I would recommend sixty seconds, ninety seconds, you guys have not seen this application until just now, go through it, take a look at it, if you need longer than that, before we start with it and then. Good question, so the initial license for an on-premise establishment is required to have a public hearing or is that optional?
It's optional.
It is, okay, I couldn't remember. And through the local option question, we're allowed now to sell beer, wine, and spirits on premise?
Correct.
All three.
Correct.
Yeah.
It says, like a corporation or a limited by.
Number eight.
Eight to eight to here.
Uh, it's a DBA, right?
DBA, sole proprietorship.
Okay. I assume that works with the river jack.
Yeah, okay, it's the same setup as the river jack.
So I'm doing an issue, I guess it's to be held responsible.
And it falls on me, so they haven't incorporated yet.
Everyone else turned up, but from what I've seen so far, I say that we move to approve this without public I keep forgetting this word, hearing, since we've already gone through the process of voting to have spirits in there, so I mean, we're just literally following through on what the voters have already said that they wanted, so I say we get them up and going and open for business.
So there's a motion, second, second, uh any further discussion?
To be quiet, another minute.
Get no more.
I thought whoever is doing that realizes that.
Yeah. The outside seating like fenced off so people can walk.
Yeah, so the the out back, the two picnic tables, they have whiskey barrels with rope strung between all, going from the side entrance all the way around to the back of the building and then the front, you know, has all the railings along the front deck.
Not easy to be even out the back.
No, not gonna go.
Yeah, it's like a cliff.
And wander your way around, there's, I mean, like, you know, if someone really wanted to get out, like you're.
Right.
Walk over the rope, but.
Yeah.
I'm going to put a camera in the back.
Take a beer and watch.
Just so I can watch what's going on back there and, you know.
Let's see.
Go.
So quick question, so has Babbel been up to do an inspection yet or not, yeah, or this is the first process?
This is the first process.
So once this is done, then Babbel comes up, they do an inspection on your premise to make sure that you met all those requirements and go through regulations.
Yeah, so, you know, if you guys sign up on this, I set up a safe and then they set up an inspection and then they have the final say, literally, not a good.
Yeah. I don't think you have anything else to do, you want to add this?
I mean, uh, you know, I've been over in Fairfield at the Riverjack Tavern for about nine months now. Pretty much the same setup, completely different venue here, but, you know, just a nice cozy pub, not looking to add, you know, any craziness to town, you know, like, we're on Facebook, we see some of the concerns people have had. Not looking to have a crazy bar, just a nice cozy pub, neighborhood place for people to come, have some drinks and have some good food and go on the safe.
So you're outside seating in the back of the business fenced in?
Uh, roped in.
Okay.
Roped in and it's just two picnic tables back there, ideally minimal outside service because it's a hassle to get back there.
It's a pain.
Yeah, I don't want to deliver food back there too often, so and then the front deck will have three tables right on the front deck, right on Main Street.
Also, there's a motion the second, uh any further discussion for anybody, seeing none, all in favor? And that's everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, whatever I had for a second. Yeah.
I have one more random question, what's the expected open date of things kind of go?
Uh, it's up in the state now, uh probably a couple of years, a couple of years, yeah, I mean, I'm hoping early to mid October. If I can really, the health equipment should be there by the end of the month and then if I can line up the health inspection and the liquor inspection, hoping mid October, worst case, end of October.
Well, my birthday is the thirty-first, so.
Well, that would be okay with that, yeah.
You'll book the first birthday party day?
It's on Monday, though, isn't it? Yeah, we'll be close on.
Uh, okay, you have anything else for the business? Okay, uh, right. Well, we go on executive session, you know, to discuss uh labor negotiations, uh so, right, I'll take a motion on that.
Will we go to executive session?
Second, uh any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? That's everybody. Okay, thanks for coming in, you can't say anymore.
Yeah, okay so we will take a lunch at the table action on the agreement with the town and uh.
Someone don't yeah.
Okay second. More in a second any further discussion on that none all in favor say everybody move into your.
Second.
More in a second any further discussions none all in favor everybody.